Members of the school committee, I'm just gonna take a roll call vote since this is the first time we've done it under the revised open meeting law. So, Mr. Minicello. Ms. Azak.
Present.
Ms. Mendez.
Present.
Mr. D'Agostino, vice chairman.
Present.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Present.
Ms. Sullivan.
Tom Minicello.
Has joined the conference.
Mr. Sullivan.
Yes.
And Mr. Minicello, Attorney Minicello just joined.
Here, how are you?
Good, thanks, Tom. Do we have superintendent of schools?
Mike Thomas is here.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. So, first of all, before I call the meeting, I want to thank, I want to thank the superintendent, I want to thank Melinda Campbell of his office, I want to thank Joe Campbell. This is, this is gonna be streamed live, it is being streamed live as we speak. Under the open meeting law revised by Governor Baker, he allows for municipalities and committees and boards and councils to do this in light of the COVID-19 epidemic. So, I do want to thank everybody for calling in, I want to thank all the efforts, it was a collaborative effort with the revised agenda as well. So, with that being said, I am gonna call the meeting of this Brockton School Committee from March 26, 2020, at being 7:00 p.m. With that being said, I am going to salute the American flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you, members of the committee. I will, I will again just go down and take a roll call just to establish a quorum. Again, we have Mr. Minicello.
Present.
Ms. Azak.
Present.
Ms. Mendez.
Present.
Mr. D'Agostino.
Present.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Present.
Ms. Sullivan.
Present.
Mr. Sullivan.
Present.
And the non-voting superintendent of schools, Mike Thomas.
Present.
And as mayor and chair, I'll be, I'll be chairing the meeting tonight. And again, because this is new, if anybody has any questions, by all means, I am respectfully gonna ask you to mute the phone. And again, when we, when we go into Q and A, if any of you have any questions as duly-elected school committee members, you can feel free to unmute. With that being said, the second agenda item on the agenda tonight is the consent agenda, which is A, B, C, D, and E. If you'd like, I can read those, if anybody wants to take those out, out of separately or collectively, I entertain a motion on that.
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
So, there's a motion made, and what I, I'll read it into the record, it was a motion made and properly seconded to approve the consent agenda. A is the approval of the March 3, 2020, regular school committee meeting minutes. Subsection B is approval of the March 3, 2020, finance subcommittee meeting report. Subsection C is the approval of the February 27, 2020, accounts review subcommittee meeting report. Subsection D of the consent agenda is approval of February 29, 2020, school committee retreat report. And then the last subsection, E, is the approval of the March 15, 2020, special school committee meeting report. There is a motion on the floor, it was properly seconded to take these and approve them. I'll have to do a roll call vote on that, but because it was duly voted on and seconded, the mayor as chair, I will vote yes. Mr. Minicello.
Yes.
Ms. Azak.
Yes.
Ms. Mendez.
Yes.
Mr. D'Agostino, vice chairman.
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez.
Yes.
Ms. Sullivan.
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan.
Yes.
We have a unanimous approval on the consent agenda duly voted on by all members of the school committee present. Any questions on that, members of the committee?
No.
Thank you. We'll go on to number three of the agenda, which is communications. And I don't know if we do or do not have any communications. Anybody aware of any communications that would be addressed this evening?
No.
None that I'm aware of.
I too am not aware of any. With that being said, we will move on to the next, which again is the report of superintendent of schools, Mike Thomas. And again, I just want to, before we go into this, I want to thank Mike, and I want to let it known to the teachers, the parents, and the students, really what a wonderful leader we have for the Brockton Public Schools during this COVID-19 crisis. Mike and I, I joined at the hip, I joke about it, but I mean it, I'm speaking more to him more than I talk to my wife, and it's, it's really a positive collaborative effort. So, I do want to thank you publicly, Mike, I want the school committee members to be thanked as well, and the city councilors. And, you know, we're really proud of the fact that we're working together during trying, trying times, unexpected, uncharted times. But I've said this, and Mike and I taped the video today, we will get through this as a community, as a city, as a Commonwealth, as a nation. But with that being said, Mike, thank you, and the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor, I really appreciate that, and I thank you for your partnership over the last several days, and we've had, we've spent a lot of time together, and I thank you for your support of not only me, but for all the staff, teachers, and all the staff of the Brockton Public Schools, and the families we serve. I also thank the school committee for their support, because all you have called to check in, all of you have offered to help, you've been out at the grab-and-go lunch locations, you've reached out to people to get donations, so I really appreciate your support during this very trying time. So, I just want to start by saying that, you know, we fully understand how hard this is on the families that we serve, how frustrating it is for kids not to be in school where we all want them to be, it's frustrating in my own home. And we understand that, and we are working hard every day, we are constantly on the phone, constantly on virtual meetings, trying to figure out how to best support our students. So, you know, I want to thank the mayor's team, I want to thank the school committee, I want to thank my executive team who have been working 12 to 15-hour days. I want to thank Kim Gibson, who has been with us pretty much the whole time, working on behalf of the families of Brockton and behalf of all her members. I want to thank Chatwells and our food service workers who have been amazing during this, they did not hesitate to come out and start serving lunches. We closed schools on a Thursday, which was March 13, and we were serving lunches on that Monday.
That's right.
In four locations, and then within, I believe, four days, we had expanded that to 10 locations across the city, so we made sure it was accessible to families throughout the city. So, I can't say enough about Chatwells and all the food service workers that work with Tom Burke, and all the effort that the executive team put in. I also want to thank Jeff Hodges for great communication, leading us through the way and making sure parents have been informed every step of the way. We try to, parents inform and send messages either through text messages or phone calls pretty much every night of the week. So, I want to thank everybody for all their hard work. It's been a lot of effort by all the teachers, the principals, the assistant principals, the associate principals, and all our department heads and directors, and we're all working together to try to get through this the best we can. So, again, our lunch program, it's 10 locations, it's open from 11:30 to 1:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, and that's the grab-and-go lunches, and it's been going great, it's been going flawless, and I really, again, I really appreciate, you know, all the work that's been put into that. And I know it's people that are going out of their homes and taking a risk, and they haven't even hesitated to do that, so we really appreciate that. I don't know if anybody had any questions on the grab-and-go program.
Mike, I had one.
Sure.
The lunch program for tomorrow, is it breakfast for Saturday and Sunday as well?
Correct. Aldo, can you fill us in here on the, exactly for the Friday meals, how they get those meals for Saturday and Sunday as well?
Yes. What happens is the, the Food and Drug Administration has given a waiver that since they know that families are dependent on these meals, and especially in this time of the virus and the limit to going to grocery stores and leaving your homes, they've allowed us to prepare your Friday breakfast and lunch, Saturday breakfast and lunch, Sunday breakfast and lunch, and serve them all at once, so the families can drive in, pick them up, and have meals for the entire weekend. So, that's, that'll be done every Friday until either the FDA changes it, or until the coronavirus situation is over.
Members of the committee, when we ask a question, we just have to identify ourselves. So, school committee member Tim Sullivan asked a question, superintendent Aldo Petronio, chief financial officer for the public schools answered it as well, we just need to note that for the records, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, thank you. So, next we're gonna go to the online learning options. So, as you know, from the guidance from the Department of Education that came out, when we first closed, the guidance came out for them, I want to say it was probably around March 18, and it was about making sure we were providing, when we found out we were closing for three weeks, and the governor closed us for three weeks until April 6, through April 6, we, we had to make sure we were providing our students with enrichment and engagement activities, so we've been working hard to post those online, and, you know, that has, has gone well, but again, we're, we're working hard to update those often, and we also, I want to fill you in on new guidance that came out today from the Department of Education. So, we're scrambling around to, we're not a district that is set up for online learning. I've been seeing some emails in the superintendent list serve, or some other districts who are very affluent, being able to flip a switch and move their students to virtual learning with pretty much not skipping a beat. It still never compares to face-to-face instruction, but as you know, with our severe budget cuts over the last several years, that is not something we have been set up to be able to just do right away. And we also understand that our families do not all have a laptop or an electronic device at home, or sometimes not the internet access at home to be able to, to do online learning. So, that's a struggle, but we are working hard to solve that problem and do our best within the next week to 10 days to make sure that we, you know, we get something set up online. And I'm gonna have, I'm gonna have Ethan Cancel, June Saber-Maguire, and Cliff Murray weigh in on the program we're looking at, a program that we currently have in the system. So, as you know, we were setting up for an online learning school, and obviously that's a little bit at a pause now, but we were gonna use the, you know, the bank over on Oak Street, and we're not set up there yet, but we did have the program that we had started, which is an online program, and that's the program we're looking to now to possibly use. Now, I want to be clear that we do have an MOU between myself and the BEA as far as the expectations for the teachers, and that was something that, you know, we needed to enter into, so obviously these are times that nobody has ever been through before, so we wanted to make sure everybody knew what's expected of them through remote learning and support of our students. So, nothing as far as anything we, we move on between, so we have an agreement between now and April 6, so now we're working on what we do with the new guidance from the Department of Education, how we're gonna move forward after April 6. So, that's what we're setting up now. So, I'll let Dr. Cancel, June Saber-Maguire, and Dr. Cliff Murray come in and fill you in on a program that we have in the district, but it's only been used for credit recovery, it's been used for students who are either can't come to school for medical conditions or other issues. So, this is the program we're looking to expand and possibly use once we work this out, and obviously once we work with the BEA as well. So, I'll let, I'll let Dr. Cancel, Dr. Murray, and June weigh in.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent.
All right. Hello, this is Ethan Cancel.
This is June, how are you?
Good evening, everybody.
All right, so I, do you want to start it, Jim?
No, I just, I, I mean, obviously we're gonna talk about Edgenuity, but up until then, until we're ready to launch that, I just want to assure the parents, families, students that are listening, that until we're really ready to launch that, that there are resources that will continue to be available to them, both online, and we plan to have printed resources available in the food locations and the food service locations across the district. So, that effort will continue, and I'm happy to talk about that after we start to talk a little bit more about Edgenuity.
All right, so, thank you, and as our chief academic officer stated, we are fortunate enough that we have a program called Edgenuity, which is not easy to say, but it is an online platform which allows students to take courses, and these are courses from potentially 6th grade up to 12th grade, it, all of the core subjects, ELA, math, science, social studies, there are some national test prep classes involved, MCAT test prep, world languages, Spanish, French, Chinese, German, and Latin, there are elective, so it's a wide range, there are AP classes, and this was originally brought to the district, Sharon Holder was instrumental in this, as Superintendent Thomas pointed out, we wanted to be able to have offerings for kids to do credit recovery, to meet the needs that they had for catching up, moving ahead possibly. So, it's an online platform, and the thing that we want to stress, as our chief academic officer stated, this doesn't, this is never and has never been designed to take the place of an in-person teacher, it is a tool that teachers can use to help students progress through. Because it is online, students would be able to access it remotely, so that's helpful. And Dr. Murray has told us that the initial reports from Edgenuity from the students taking it have been positive. We have tried it out on a small number of students, that was our intent, but it turns out that the licensing is for an entire site. So, as of right now, we already have licenses for all students 9 through 12, whether we use it, how we roll it out, that remains to be seen, but we have the capacity right now to, to roll it out. We also have some licenses at the alternative schools for grades 6 through 8. A lot of the heavy lifting behind the scenes to make sure that our rosters are able to flow seamlessly overnight and update automatically, that's already been taken care of. So, that is the program, I can bore you with more details if you want, but I think that that's a pretty good overview of it.
Thank you very much, Ms. Saber-Maguire and Dr. Cancel. Are there any committee members that have questions, and if so, if you could kindly state your name and then ask the question? See, there is.
Mr. Mayor, Jim Sullivan.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan.
Dr. Cancel, what about the lower grades, the grades 1 through 5, do you have anything for them?
Absolutely do, and I will, I will let our chief academic officer tell you all about them, because we have a very, very rich supply of high-quality resources.
Oh, yes, Mr. Sullivan, how are you? This is what I was referring to at the beginning. So, at the elementary level, we really do have quite a few really high-quality, both online and print resources that we're using in our schools and all of our classrooms, so those are the resources that we're really focused on making available to our students and our families. So, if you were to look at the Brockton Public Schools Learning Resources website and went over to K-5, you would see that this past week has a series of lessons posted for ELA and math for every day of the week, that really, when I looked at what came out of the commissioner's guidance today, we really are pretty close to meeting what the state is actually asking us to do at the elementary level. For instance, if you, I'm looking at a grade 4 math lesson, you'll see the standards posted, there's a clear objective, there's an instructional learning video that the students and families can go on that connects back to that standard and objective, there's a practice worksheet that again connects back to both the standard and the objective, there's a problem of the day that the students are able to engage with, and then there are actual games, both that can be played with students and families that are available to sort of engage the families in those games, again, all connected back to the objective, to the standard, and then there's also a link to some of the online resources that we have available to us that will take the families directly to an online resource that connects back to whatever that objective is. For instance, the one I'm looking at is compare two fractions, and so that's grade 4, it's a grade 4 math lesson, day 1, but you'll see that, that's a consistent thread that is going to be available to our students every single day. And something similar for ELA, you'll see it's again, day 1 through 5, the objective, there's a weekly newsletter that will go home, that will, well, go home will be available to the families when they go to that link on a weekly basis on either Sunday or Monday, depending on when we put the resource up. And then I know that the superintendent plans on having good resources, I don't, again, know exactly how many, but we will have printed resources for families that aren't able to either print or to access some of these resources online. So, that's the elementary plan, it's, it's, I think, a pretty good plan, obviously it's going to take a lot of work to keep it going over the number of weeks where this extension has just been, been announced. And I do want to say that there has been a number of people that I really do want to say have done tremendous work, coordinators, Dr. Randra, Dr. Ronan, instructional coaches in our schools, our principals, associate principals, it's really been a team effort to put these resources together in a way that I think are a meaningful opportunity for our kids to continue to be engaged in learning. So, I hope that answers your question about the elementary.
Yes, it does, thank you, it sounds really, really good, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Any other school committee members have questions for any of the parties on the call? Seeing none, we'll, we'll move on to the next stated item, Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you, Mayor. So, I just want to remind families that if you do have internet access at home in a, in a device, please make sure you continue to visit vpsma.org, our website, there, you pull it right up and there's information, all our outreach information about COVID-19, the information about the grab-and-go locations, but also the large bubble under learning resources at home. We, we passed out for the last two weeks, learning packets, we've printed thousands, thousands of them, we are now reloading to new updated learning packets, so it takes a long time to print those and get those ready, so by next Wednesday, we'll have updated. So, the ones that we did give out the last couple of weeks, they're, they're scheduled to last between seven and 10 days, and we'll have more printed for next Wednesday to give out at the 10 locations. I want to thank the principals who've been going out to the lunch locations and giving those, giving those packets out, and again, we'll have updated packets when we go. Right, so I want to speak a little bit about the state, and I want to talk about, so what we've done in anticipation for a longer closing was I had IT and Dan Beechard prepare 5,000 laptops that we pulled from across the schools, we updated, we put a filter on them, they're all now located at Brockton High School, and basically for possible deployment to families that may need them. However, we need the state to make a ruling on the MCAT testing, they have, at this time, only postponed the testing through now until May 4. And unfortunately, as you know, and I don't want to keep saying this, but I have to because of our budget cuts, we have, we're not a one-to-one district where our students are able to take and send a laptop home with every student, so it's really, I can't deploy these until the state makes a ruling on the MCAT, because if, when we do get back to school and the state decides to have the MCAT, and we would need these devices to test, and if they weren't available to test, they would, they probably could replace the superintendent at that time, so, but they are ready for deployment, we're hoping that the state makes a ruling on MCAT either tomorrow or Monday, and once that happens, we'll get a survey out through each school, the principals will do a survey with their families to see who needs a laptop, and then we will work on how to deploy those by school to the families that need them, and that would be one device per family. And then, obviously, that would really help and support families to be able to do whatever programs, the programs on, the learning that's already posted online, but also if, if we move to using an online platform like Edgenuity, then, you know, the students would be able to go on and perform that. But that's pretty much our plan, and that's where we are right now, but again, we need to know what's going on with the MCAT, and hopefully we have a, a ruling on that by either tomorrow or Monday morning.
Thank you.
I didn't hear any questions about that.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Committee members, any questions for the superintendent?
One question, Tim Sullivan.
Mr. Sullivan.
Mike, as far as the, I heard you getting computers ready, what about the internet for people who do not have internet in Brockton?
We, there, Comcast, Xfinity, Comcast has set up hotspot, so we, when we give out the computer, we'll, we'll actually have a printed piece of paper to, that would help people log into that free service, Comcast is supposed to be expanding that, so that would be available as well. We've actually, that information has been put out there for families that who may not have had internet service but do have it a device at home, so we've sent that information out, so we'll continue to make that information available, and we would give, with the laptop, we would have a sheet attached which would give instructions about how to log on to one of those hotspot, Wi-Fi hotspots, and, you know, Mayor, you might know a little bit more about what Comcast has done in the city of Brockton for these Wi-Fi hotspots.
Yeah, so I can tell you in my, my past life, when I did some work for them, they have a program called Internet Essentials that they utilize, and Brockton benefits by that. So, there is a variety of hotspot locations that would be itemized, and on that sheet of paper that the superintendent is talking about, it would be information for the, the parents or the guardians, location-driven, so that the people that needed to utilize those hotspots would know exactly where to go, but it has been a program that's helped many communities throughout the Commonwealth.
One final question, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Would, would that internet access be free?
It, it is, it is, Mr. Sullivan, the way that they do it, they provide it to the community, and, and again, what the superintendent is saying is, it's locked and loaded, it's ready to go. to go, they, they'll have the information. And when those 5,000 laptops are going to be able to be released, one per family, they'll be attached to that just in case people needed to utilize that hotspot.
Okay, thank you.
Committee members, any other questions for the superintendent?
Yes. Hey, I'm Mark D'Agostino. Just wanted to let the committee members know on the topic of MCAS and Student Opportunity Act, I did reach out on behalf of the committee to Representatives Cronin and Cassidy just to indicate our concerns and ask for their support on, on, you know, on that issue. And, and they did indicate they, they understood and it was being worked on. And so I just wanted to let you guys know that I did reach out on, on behalf of the committee on, on that.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. And I too mentioned it to the three state reps and the state senator, and I know the superintendent has as well, so they're working diligently for us. But ultimately, our hands are tied right now. We hope, as the superintendent says, that we'll know tomorrow or know later than Monday. Any other questions for the superintendent about that specific topic he was talking about? Or should we move on to subsection B, which is finances during closure payroll for employees?
Uh, Mayor, I have one more thing.
I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry, absolutely. I missed that. Yes, please, Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you. So I wanted Sharon Walder, who's on the call, executive team member and chief of Student Support Services, has, again, like all executive team members, has spent a ton of time and doing a ton of different things like we all have, but she has spent a lot of time with the Special Education Department and Lori Mason, and also with the Bilingual Education Department with Kelly Jones. So, you know, we need, we really need to keep, and, and the thing about a district like ours who is not ready to just jump to full virtual online, and one of the, one of the reasons for that is also, you know, we have a lot of students with special needs, and we have a lot of students who are English language learners. And when we, when we're making plans and, and doing different things that we need to do for our students, we always have them at the forefront and make sure that it's equity for all students that we serve and educate. And obviously, when you're in a situation where you're trying to have students learn from home, you know, when you have students with special needs and students with, that English language learners, it's, it's, it's very important for us to make sure that what we're providing is equal for our students and accessible. So Sharon has spent a lot of time on that over the last several days, and, and she's going to speak about that. She's also going to speak about, obviously, something that's very important, and that's the one, one of the things we focus on after we made sure that we were able to feed, to give students food and feed families with our lunch program, but it's also, it's the social, emotional piece. And, you know, what this has done and the burden this has brought on families, but also what it's doing to our kids. Because everybody knows, as we all went to school, how much fun and how, how much you enjoyed school and how much school is a structure. And even though some kids dread going to school, they, I think they love to be with their friends, obviously, and they love to just, you know, have a, have a routine and a structure in place. And, you know, Al, that, you know, has been blown up since, you know, since March the 12th and now all the way to, to May 4th. So it's very important that we keep that in the forefront of the social, emotional wellbeing of our, of our students and our families. So I'm going to have Sharon speak on those, those three things.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Ms. Walder?
Yes, hello, it's Sharon Walder.
Good evening.
I'll start with, good evening. I'll start with the work that's been done for English language learners. The department is led by Kelly Jones, and what they have done is the facilitators all have district-issued phones, so they have been fielding a number of calls since we've been out of school, providing parents with information, helping them figure out how to access the resources that we have online and to use translator tools like Google Translator and the translator on Facebook so that they can work to access the information that we're providing. I do want to point out that what the district has been providing has all been translated, or is just a matter of a click for translators to make sure that people are able to get the information in, in their primary languages. They also provided information to principals and teachers on who can do translations for them if they need a translator on a call with them, and some tips for people to use when they're communicating with EL students and their families. So all of that has, has gone out. The department head or the director is meeting regularly with her leadership team to make sure that they are constantly up to date on what's going on and able to provide information to teachers and, of course, the students and families. They have a button on the BPS website, the Learning From Home button, that you'll see bilingual and ESL is on there, and on that are a number of learning opportunities and quite a few web resources that are identified also by language so that students and families will know which of those sources they can go into that will help them with the language needs that they have. In special education, the special education is led by the director, Lori Mason. Lori has been taking calls and emails on a regular basis. I, I want to point out too that the district today put out a one-page resource guide that went to all the grab-and-go locations and was distributed to people with a number of email addresses and how to access different aspects of the Brockton Public Schools website as well as some of the local mental health organizations to support families in the community. Lori has continuously responded to questions about special education. As you can imagine, this is a very tough one because trying to help support families, especially how to deliver any type of support when a student is learning from home, has been quite a challenge. And so she has been able to help direct people appropriately. Currently, what is expected of the district is that we focus on regular communication with families, which we are doing, to provide two modes of instruction, one being low-tech mode, which would be the paper handouts, which we have continued to provide, and they're considered, considered low-tech even if you have to click online to get them because it is basically a handout. But we are also expected to provide some level of instruction to, to students with disabilities so that they can maintain the skills that they have. And everything that we do with them in that realm is to help them maybe take those skills and review things that they, that they've already learned. Lori has been working diligently with all of her department chairs and providing support to teachers as they move forward with reaching out to students. There's also a button on the website for special education in the Learning at Home section that has resources for students in specialized programs and a range of resources for all grade levels. So she, that has been, and she will continue to, to take calls from, and emails from parents and families. The area that we get a number of questions about are team meetings, and at this time the district is not holding team meetings, and we are working on a system of making sure that we communicate to our families, have upcoming team meetings, what, what system the, the district will have for that. In terms of Student Support Services with social, emotional learning and the School Adjustment Councils, the School Adjustment Councils have been fabulous, reaching out and working with families and making sure that people are connected to the resources that the district has. We are currently working on developing a support services team that would be probably 12 adjustment counselors and three nurses that will have district-issued phones that will field calls from parents and families as we move forward because we know we'll get more calls and people need more access to those services as we go along. So that's in progress. And once we have that up and running, on the homepage of the Brockton Public Schools, Jeff is working with us to put a button on the homepage just for social, emotional resources and services.
Thank you very much, Ms. Walder. Are there any committee members that have any additional questions for Sharon? Seeing none, we'll, we'll move on. Thank you again, Ms. Walder.
Yes, Mayor, one more thing, just I would be remiss if I didn't thank Dr. Cobb, also Dan Beechard and his IT team. Dr. Cobb oversaw the, you know, the gathering of the 5,000 laptops, and he worked closely with Dan Beechard and the members of the IT department to pretty quickly, within pretty, within four days, get them ready at the, at the high school, make sure they were all working and needed the filters on them that, that were required, and, you know, how, how fast they turned this around. Again, I want to, I want to thank Dr. Cobb and, and the IT department for, for how hard they worked on that. And also, I want to thank Aldo and all the work he did, he's done with Ken Thompson with all the planning around making sure that the lunches and the drivers got everything where they needed to go, making sure the printed packets were picked up. Dr. Murray himself at Brockton High has been in the print shop, printing thousands of papers. So, you know, everybody has pretty much done every job to try to do everything we can to make sure we support our families. So, and pretty much that, that's it for me, and I'll have, I'll have a few things later but that I'll ask Kim Gibson to join me on. But that, that's it for me right now.
Mr. Superintendent, I too, I too want to thank, on behalf of the school committee, all the individuals you mentioned. I mean, it really is a combined professional effort, and, and without, you know, everybody working together as a team, we would not be achieving what we are right now for the, for the students that we serve. So thank you for that, and, and we can move on the, the next agenda item unless there's any questions. Mr. Superintendent, could you address subsection B on the report of the superintendent of the schools, please?
Sure. So finances, I wanted to update you on this, and I wanted to have Aldo Petronio join me. So as you know, that all Brockton Public Schools employees who receive a regular paycheck as their main source of income are all getting paid. And that, I think, is very important, what, and I want to thank the school committee for that. You know, we had that discussion during our emergency meeting, and you were clear that that was very important to you, that the, that the employees that work for us were all going to continue to get a paycheck, again, their regular salary. And I got to thank Aldo, Diane Scharr, and the payroll department and her team because they've been spending a lot of time. And then there's some, you know, there's some hourly employees that they had to weed through, several of them, to, to make sure that they were clear on, on payment for them. So I, I'll have Aldo come in and explain the process, and, and he can answer any questions about, you know, if you have specific questions about the groups of people getting paid or, or the positions that are being paid. So Aldo can go over that.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent.
Hi, this is Aldo Petronio. So as the superintendent said, I've worked closely with him, with Captain Moran, her department, and the Human Resources Department and her supervisors. We've worked through all the various employee groups, and as the superintendent said, anyone who's on a salary, we continue to pay their salary. So as we work through, there are a lot of employees that are hourly, some don't always have the same amount of hours. So if the, if the group was consistent and they did 30 and a quarter hours a week, that's what they're going to continue to receive. If they weren't consistent, we've been through, really employee by employee, to see if they've been with us, you know, back as far as January 1st, have they worked regular hours, are they still on the payroll? Some of them, we came up with an average weekly number of hours, and if that's the case, that's what we're going to pay them if they weren't, you know, with a set number of hours. So we've gone through and, and basically, there's 3,030 employees as we began this. So we've gone through and made a notation for every one of them as to how they would be paid. The ones who won't get paid will be like a per DM sub who's only called in when needed, someone who works for us sporadically, that again, is only comes by when we need them. But anyone that has been working, basically, their regular routine, we've worked out some hours for them. Anyone who's a retiree, we're...
Recording stopped.
Who in there? Hello?
Still here, Aldo.
Okay. So anyone who's a retiree, we, I've determined that they're already receiving a paycheck, they already have income. And the goal of this was to try and help everyone maintain some sort of income. So again, we've, over the years, we've always had a number of retirees that, again, come in sporadically to help us, so they're not included in, in this overall evaluation and paycheck of, of the various employees. So we think we've got it down pretty well. We've gone through the list several times, and I think tomorrow or...
Recording started.
We're transmitting of those, all of those employees to City Hall, and City Hall, in turn, with the Treasurer's Office will issue the payments. And most employees in the School Department direct deposit, so the, the checks will arrive as they usually do. Anyone who's not, in the past, who would send the checks directly to each school for those people, so all checks are going to be mailed at this point. There aren't no schools to send them to, there is no staff to be in place to have people pick up checks. So everything is being stamped and mailed by City Hall. So that's how we're handling all of the employee staff, and I can talk about vendors if you have questions on vendors.
Mr. Petronio, thank you. School committee members, any questions relative to what Aldo just opined on?
Yes, Mayor and, and Mr. Petronio, Mark D'Agostino, thank you, first of all, Aldo, for everything you've been doing to try and, and work through the, the financial side of this. I did have a question. I know we were waiting for guidance on, on vendors, and, I mean, you know, some are obviously large organizations, but we also have some vendors that are, you know, independent contractor, you know, people as well. So I was curious as to, have we received guidance on, on the vendor issue at this point?
We have not. We've, I've spoken with the, the Department of Ed and their finance department, and until we hear something from higher up, right now, the Mass General Law says unless services have been rendered, or unless your contract says someone is receiving a payment for, just as part of the contract, no, they, they cannot be paid. When, I know that myself and I know many others are getting phone calls and emails from many of the transportation companies for a student and other companies, they want us to pay their drivers. At this point, we have no legal, no legal grounds to pay them with. If I submit any invoices to the city auditor, the city auditor's going to say, when did the services occur? And if the services have not occurred, there is no way to pay them. I've spoken to my counterparts in Fall River and Worcester, they're all in the same boat, we're all waiting for guidance. I have a, a conference call Monday with all the school business officers in the state and Jay Sullivan, who is the, the head of finance for the Department of Ed. And the, the number one issue for Monday is these transportation vendors because they're not only emailing us and the mayor, and they're emailing every city and town and the mayor. We've received correspondence from the Teamsters Union, same thing. At this point, my only answer really to them is your drivers can apply for unemployment like everyone else at this point that's not actively employed. But until and when the either governor or the Attorney General's office says that we're going to allow something, you know, contrary to the Mass General Law of no goods, no services, no payment, we can't move on that, there's nothing we can do.
Okay, thank you. If you can just, whenever we do finally get some guidance, communicate that to, to the committee, that'd be great.
I will, I will.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. D'Agostino. Any other committee members have a question for Mr. Petronio?
Yes, Tim Sullivan?
Mr. Sullivan, please.
Aldo?
Yes?
If, if there's a mistake, and somebody, you were talking about the, you want to give the average of hours? If there's a mistake, is there another they can call?
Um, well, I only have, I've had staff in three days this week, I'm trying to limit it to two days next week. I'm trying to minimize the amount of time people come in the office. But if they want to email, you know, they can email me, they can email, I guess the one email they see online all the time is Jeff Rogers, but if they can email my account, Aldo E. Petronio at vpsma.org, I mean, they're, I'm pretty sure they're all online, I'll, you know, I'll get back to them, I'll try and do it the same day, but absolutely. Or if they want to go to their union president, have the union president contact me or their principal. principal, have their principal contact me, that's fine also.
Aldo, this is the mayor. Do you mind spelling out your email address for those that are listening?
Yes. A-L-D-O-E-E-E-R-O-N-I-O at B, as in Brockton, E as in public, S as in school, M-A dot org.
Thank you, Aldo.
You're welcome.
Members of the committee, any additional question? Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Any additional questions for Mr. Petronio from the committee? Seeing none, we'll, we'll move on to subsection C of the superintendent of the schools' report, please.
Um, I also want to just back up for a second, and also, I, I also didn't thank Dr. Kathy Moran from HR, who has spent a ton of time at Central, working with Aldo to, to figure out the, the payment, and also, has also worked with the union heads, and stayed in touch with all the union presidents during this time. So, I want to thank Kathy and her team for all the work they have done. We really, it's much appreciated. It was very important that we made sure that, you know, people weren't going to miss a paycheck. So, her and Aldo and their teams did a great job making sure that, that didn't happen. So, next, we'll move into, this is the first read. I know it's hard to think about next year, for what we're going through, but we did, we needed to get a first read in for next year's school calendar. So, if anybody had any questions on that, you know, you obviously feel free to ask.
Uh, I have a quick question, Joy Cusack.
Ms. Cusack, go ahead, please.
Um, so, this is, I'm looking at this calendar. So, I know sometimes we, we run into issues where events are being, are scheduled on a holiday. How can we make sure that any events that are going on are run through Central first, so we can just make sure, when they are added to the calendars, that we're avoiding, you know, whether it's Jewish holiday, Catholic holidays, things like that? Because we are running into a lot of that.
Um, so, thank you, Joy. So, what we do is, this is the calendar that shows the vacations and all the, the legal holidays and the start and end of school. So, then we have the district calendar, which is color-coded, that Jess Hodges will take over. And you're right, we have to make sure we stay away from, like, scheduling parent conferences or orientations, if there's a Jewish holiday or another religious holiday. So, and also not to double book things that are happening across the district, if there's an art show, not going on the same time as a music, a concert, or a play isn't going on at the Puff School at the same time there's one going on at Brockton High. So, Jess, you obviously joined us, this, after the school year started, so she'll be taking that on going forward. So, she'll be the master keeper of that district calendar, and that's the calendar that is color-coded that we send out to, to our families, once the calendar's set in stone by the school committee. And also, that district calendar, there's a shared drive on, for all employees, and that has to be checked, and then run through Jess going forward to make sure things are not double booked, and making sure things are not put on religious holidays as well. So, I thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah, great. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Cusack. Any other additional questions for this school calendar, which is just the first read, by any committee members? Seeing none, we'll, we'll move on. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, please.
I'd like to make a motion.
In turn?
The motion is
We, we don't, at this time, Mr. Sullivan, we don't need to do a motion on that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, though. So, there's no other
We will definitely have a second.
Yes, we will, we will. No, though, there'll be, this is just the first read. Yep, there'll be second, and we'll vet it out. And again, we'll, we'll make any revisions that are, you know, applicable and appropriate. So, so, hold that motion, but we'll get back to you in a, in a couple of weeks on that, Mr. Sullivan. We'll go on to subsection D if we could. Items to refer to Subcommittee. Superintendent, please.
So, right now, I would like to ask the school committee if we could schedule a finance Subcommittee meeting virtually, obviously, for next Thursday night, as we're moving into the new guidance from the Department of Education. And as you know, with the extended closure, I think it's, we're going to, the school committee, Dr. Moran and myself, need to enter into, into MOUs with all our unions, except for the school police. And I think that we need to start that soon. So, I know Dr. Moran is going to reach out to the union president, so we can enter into MOUs, because we're going to have to make some, make some decisions of what's going to happen between April 6th and May 4th. And I really need to have the school committee involved in that, so it can be vetted out, and we can figure out how, everybody, and again, this has been, we, we, there's no playbook for this, like we have for Blizzard, the snow day. So, none of us, we're all working through this together and trying to do the best we can. But, and there's a lot of, you know, obviously, there's a lot of employees, MTAs, paraprofessionals, and, and other employees, long-term subs, that they could be assisting during this time, and they've all reached out and want to assist, and we also, with the custodians. But I think we're going to have to come up with formal MOUs that would get us from April 6th to, to May 4th. So, I'd like to try to start working on those and have a discussion about, on those at Finance Subcommittee meeting next Thursday night.
Members of the committee, that would be April 2nd, which would be a week from this evening. If we could entertain a motion on that, it would be at 7:00. Again, it would be, it would be in accordance with the, the new revised Governor Baker, which was the open meeting revision dated March 12th, 2020. So, I'd entertain a motion for a designation of a finance Subcommittee next Thursday night, April 2nd, at 7:00 PM. Is there a motion on that, please?
A question on the motion.
There's a question on the motion by Mr. Sullivan.
Uh, the question is, we have contract negotiations Thursday, April 2nd, at 6 o'clock at Central. Is that going to be a virtual meeting, or is that canceled?
I can tell you, Mr. Sullivan, on, on the city side, as mayor, I've, I've put all contract negotiations for the different unions that are applicable to me on, on hold at this time. The, the unions that I've spoken to want to do face-to-face, and I think it's more appropriate. So, I can't opine on, on the question you just asked. I don't know if the superintendent has any information relative to Mr. Sullivan's inquiry.
Um, Dr. Moran, do we have any information on that?
Uh, this is Kathy Moran. I'd have to find out exactly which union Mr. Sullivan's talking about.
The Lunch Grill.
Okay, I will check with that union tonight, and I will send something to Mr. Thomas.
Thank you, Dr. Moran. And even if that would, was going to take place, that would be at 6:00. Do we have a projection on, on, on a 7:00 Subcommittee of the Finance Committee? Does that 7:00 or 7:30 timeframe work for the committee?
Yes, it does, it works for me.
Okay, and I know Mr. Minicello made a motion. Mr. Minicello made a motion for a 7:00, April 2nd Subcommittee. Is there a second on that motion, please?
Second.
Okay, so we need to take a roll call. As chair, I say yes. Mr. Minicello?
Yes, please.
Ms. Cusack?
Yes.
Ms. Mendez?
Yes.
Mr. D'Agostino?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Uh, uh, yes.
Ms. Sullivan?
Yes, yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
All right, it's duly unanimous. We will schedule a Subcommittee, and we'll be virtual again. And it's going to be one week from this evening, 7:00 PM, which would be Thursday, April 2nd. Mr. Superintendent, any additional information you'd like to share with the committee this evening?
Um, the, under the Student Opportunity, unfinished business?
Yes, yep, we'll, we'll go on to number five on the agenda, which is unfinished business, Student Opportunity Act, three-year district plan. Mr. Superintendent, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, right now, we also should have words, probably tomorrow or Monday, about the Student Opportunity Act plans, that actually, this, we were supposed to be voting on tonight. We were told by the Department of Ed that they did file with the state to hold those off until even May 1st, due to be, on May 1st, or June 1st. We haven't got an exact date on that, but we did, we were told to put those on hold. We're just waiting for the new date of when they're going to be due, and that has to be determined by the state representative.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Any questions for the superintendent relative to that? Seeing none, we'll, we'll move on to agenda item number six, which is new business. I don't know if any of the committee members have any new business, but I do want to publicly thank Jess Hodges as well. The city of Brockton, at least out of my office, we don't have a communications director as, as of yet. And Jess, during this COVID-19, has just been a really wonderful resource, setting up interviews for the superintendent and myself with WATD and, and news outs to, to get, really get the information out to the general public. So, I do want to publicly thank Jess. Were there any other committee members that had any new business that they'd like to share at this time? Seeing none. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, please.
Uh, Joy Cusack.
Ms. Cusack, please, first.
Okay, I just wanted to, just thank everyone again. Our superintendent, our school department, everyone's really come together in a short period of time to really, you know, it's amazing if you look back and see what we've done in less than two weeks. And I also wanted to thank Chartwell. A couple of weeks ago, when we first started the Grab and Go, I was able to stop by. And, you know, I, I know our numbers are growing, the more that we, we let the parents, a lot of the families know about the Grab and Go, a lot of them are getting out there. And it was really nice to see some of our principals out there, getting the packets out to the students. You see the smiling faces on the students, they really do miss school. And it's really nice when you see the principals, you know, being able to see their students and, and catch up for a couple of seconds, you know, as they're getting what they need. And I wanted to also mention Cradle to Crayons has been amazing to us. Again, we have such an amazing partnership with them. They went ahead and they were able to personally deliver. Usually, I go into Brighton with some of our facility trucks. They're tied up right now with the Grab and Go program. So, Cradle to Crayons was able to send one of their drivers with six pallets, and we have toys, some are used, some are, you know, slightly used, a lot of them are new. You know, school supplies, some hygiene products. They sent us diapers that we're going to try to give to a lot of the young families. And so, we're trying to work on that, and it'll be a first come, first served. But that should be sometime next week. I'll have Jess put that on the BP, the Brockton Public Schools Facebook page, just to let everybody know. But again, just, we've all come together. It's teamwork, but it's pretty amazing what we've all done in a short period of time. No one's ever gone through this. Would we have ever imagined we're going to go through something like this? Never in my life would I have ever thought, you know, the whole entire world is affected. But we should all be very proud for what we've done in a short period. So, thank you to our superintendent, and to our mayor, and my, my fellow school committee members, and our BPS family.
Thank you so much, Ms. Cusack, and thank you for your efforts as well. It makes a big difference, so thank you. I believe there was another committee member that wanted to say something?
Yes, Tim Sullivan?
Mr. Sullivan, please.
I too wanted to thank Chartwell Foods, the manager there, Tom Burke, Mike the Chef, which is Mike Dombrowski, and the Lunch Grill, Michelle, Sergio, Mary, Debbie, and Christine, and our truck driver, Lee. That group has been with me for the last two weeks. I feel like they're my family now, of getting in all the wealth. They do a nice job. I just wanted to thank them.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. And we, we really do just, you know, we're fortunate to have really dedicated workers and citizens that have come together during this challenging time. Are there any other committee members that would like to offer any new business or any thoughts?
Mayor, this is Aldo, if no one else has anything.
Aldo, please.
Um, I would like, after my discussion earlier about the payment of employees, I would really feel comfortable, more comfortable if we had a motion to continue paying the salary in hourly employees as this coronavirus keeps the schools shut down.
Yeah, I mean, we could do belts and suspenders. Yeah, I think that'd be appropriate. I mean, we did, we did take the special vote on that Sunday, but yeah, we could dot the i's and cross the t's. So, if nobody objects, we'll go back to, let me see, it was Agenda Four, Subsection B, Payroll for Employees. I'll entertain a motion to maintain the status quo and pay like we've already authorized.
Motion made.
Don't move.
Motion was made, I believe, by, was that Mr. Minicello?
Yep.
Seconded by Mr. Sullivan. We'll take a roll call vote. The chair says yes, Mr. Minicello?
Yes.
Ms. Cusack?
Yes.
Ms. Mendez?
Yes.
Mr. D'Agostino?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Unanimous vote. Status quo, payroll for employees will continue as our previous vote, confirmed by this ratification vote. Thank you, Mr. Petronio. Was there any other committee members that had any new business?
I have some new business.
Yes, please.
Superintendent.
Yes, please, Mr. Superintendent.
Um, I'm going to have Ethan jump in here, but I do need a approval from the school committee to expand Brockton Public Schools' email addresses to allow them to be given to students in pre-K to 5, with our IT policy. We only allow email addresses, Brockton Public School email addresses, for sixth grade, 6th to 12th. But I think at this time, to help families that do not have email addresses, if we can move to supplying those for all our students, pre-K to 5, that would have, every student would have an email address, and that could be used by their parents to help log in to some of our learning sites, and also help us moving forward with the, with our online learning platforms. So, Ethan, I don't know if you want to jump in and, and provide any more detailed information about that?
Um, I'm happy to, Mike. As, as the superintendent said, it would be helpful, not so much for, you know, under normal circumstances, you would say, why would a preschool or kindergarten or need a email address? But by having a bpsma.org email address, we can ensure that the student will only receive emails from inside our organization. And that is a very good thing for security. We have, it enables us, in this time, to be able to communicate remotely with people. And it just really, it enhances security, it helps with rostering, it helps with the assignment of certain programs. So, there really isn't as much of a need for it during normal conditions, when it's very easy to pick up the phone, drive over to the school, and talk to people. You can pick up the phone now, but you cannot drive over to the school and talk to people face-to-face. So, this is a great communication tool, and it will really help our learning platforms.
Thank you, Dr. Cancel, for that summary. And the superintendent, I'm going to entertain a motion to open up email addresses through pre-K through 5th grade. Is there a motion, please?
Motion to open up email addresses from pre-K to 5th grade.
Motion was made, motion was made by Mr. D'Agostino, it was seconded by Ms. Cusack. We'll take a roll call vote. Chair, Mr. Sullivan says yes. Mr. Minicello?
Yes.
Ms. Cusack?
Yes.
Ms. Mendez?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. D'Agostino, please.
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
Unanimous vote. It's ratified, and email access capability is provided pre-K to 5th grade Brockton Public Schools. Is there any other new business before us tonight?
I have one thing. I just want to, again, this is, the new guidelines just came out this morning from the Department of Education. I emailed those out to you. And as you can see, I'll let you know on the back, that these guidelines were signed off on by the Mass Association of School Committees, the American Federation of Teachers, the Mass Association of School Superintendents, the Massachusetts Parent Teacher Association, and the MTA, the Massachusetts Teachers Association. So I want to ask Kim Gibson to jump on and just give us a brief overview on the work the MTA did with the Department of Education and the other organizations that I just mentioned, to lead us through these new guidelines. I want to be clear that these guidelines will be posted on our website, and these guidelines, we're supposed to follow these guidelines going into effect on April 6th. So that's what we're working on now, to make sure that we're following these, and doing everything we can for the students that fall under these guidelines, and everything we have been doing for our students. So I'd like to ask BEA President Kim Gibson to just come on and just speak about how this committee worked together, the group of people worked together with Commissioner O'Reilly to put these guidelines in place.
Hi, everyone. This is Kim Gibson, BEA President. So I do want to share that MTA, we have been having conference calls, just as all of you have been doing the same thing. And they worked key, along with AFT Massachusetts, in drafting this guidance. And it was really key to represent those of us in the districts that have been less fortunate than the Wellesleys and the Brooklines out there. One of the things that was important was that remote learning isn't just online learning, and I think we need to keep that in the forefront of what we're doing, that we need our students to be engaged at home in a new way. This is actually an exciting time for everyone, because we can change how we're doing things. But as you'll see, the guidance still needs some work. They are hoping to get out new guidelines for special education and English learners as well. And hopefully that's out within the next couple of days, as some of the other guidance we're waiting for.
Thank you, Ms. Gibson. Any questions of the committee members? Thank you.
And I just want to say...
Sure, Superintendent.
I've seen superintendents going back and forth on emails. I'm on a superintendent email list serve, and who rarely struggle with their relationships with their union. And some of the MOUs that were put together, and again, none of these MOUs have anything to do with compensation, and some of them took days and days and days to put together because of a poor relationship. But, you know, Kim and I, and her team, and my team were able to work together, and I think it was less than 24 hours to be able to put the guidelines in that we've been following. So I just, I just can't say enough about the relationship Kim has with myself and with the members of my team, and her reputation with her members. And, you know, she's a pleasure to work with, and always has the best interest of the students at the forefront. So I want to thank her for her leadership during this tough time, because it has been very effective and very, very helpful to us.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. And again, Kim's a proud graduate of class of 1988, in 1988 Brockton High. So we thank her for her efforts on behalf of the BEA. Any other questions of committee members for Ms. Gibson? Thank you, Kim. Committee members, any other new business? Committee members, I need to read the announcement. Again, this is a learning process for us, but I need to read this, just to go on the record. Out of respect for public health and in response to the governor's declared state of emergency, this meeting will be closed to the public, and interested parties can instead access the deliberations via live stream featured prominently on the Brockton Public Schools' website, bpsma.org. This meeting is being held in accordance with Governor Charlie Baker's signed Open Meeting Law Order dated March 12, 2020, which relieves a public body from the requirement of Section 20 of Chapter 38, that it conduct its meeting in a public place that is open and physically accessible to the public, provided that the public body makes provisions to ensure public access to the deliberations of the public body for interested members of the public through adequate alternative means. And we have definitely done that this evening. I do want to take a moment, as mayor and as chair of the school committee, to just give each and every one of you an update. As I sit here right now in my office, we have 43 confirmed cases of coronavirus. Brockton residents are confirmed COVID-19 positive. We're taking all the precautions we need to do. I have three conference calls per week with the healthcare professionals, the CEOs of the hospital, Brockton Neighborhood Health Center, Father Bill's Main Spring, two calls per week with all the nursing home, rest homes, and assisted facilities in the city, and two calls per week with all the adult daycare facilities in the city of Brockton, having regular updates with the governor, and Congressman Lynch, and U.S. Senator Markey, and Warren's office today. But again, these are 43 people. Unfortunately, we project, and we listen to the healthcare professionals, this is going to get a lot worse before it gets better. But we need to maintain all the precautions that the healthcare professionals are telling us, and we keep saying this, but it's true. Social distancing of at least six feet. Today, we gave a video conference, myself and the superintendent, and we were about eight feet apart. It didn't look, it didn't look right, but it was the right thing to do. Again, wash your hands for at least 20 seconds, disinfect all hard surfaces. And again, stay at home, right? Stay in and around your home. This isn't an extended vacation. And that's why we're doing this virtual call today, and we'll continue to do that. With that being said, we will be concluding the agenda tonight, but we're going into an executive session, and that's pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21a3. It's to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, Brockton Educational Paraprofessionals Association, and IBAA, TEA, and Brockton Educational Association. I need to, I need to request a form of a motion, which would be properly seconded, to enter executive session, and then I'll take a roll call vote. I need a motion on that, please?
Motion to go into executive session.
Motion made by Mr. D'Agostino, seconded by who?
Clifford Murray.
That's it.
Seconded by Ms. Mendez. Now I take a roll call vote, please, to enter executive session. The chair says yes. Mr. Minicello?
Yes.
Ms. Z. Zach?
Yes.
Ms. Mendez?
Yes.
Mr. D'Agostino, please.
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Sullivan?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan?
Yes.
So, members of the committee, we will be going into executive session. At this time, the teleconferencing, the live stream, will be shut off, because they're not privileged under executive session. It's not privy to the general public. And the audio taping of this also will be shut off. So we'll just take about a two-second delay on this, if we could.